That way we'll allow a couple of types of the issues to get worked by. But we're going to go ahead and get started. I don't know if you can go for it.
Sure, I believe so.
All right, I'm going to gab on the meeting. Regular meeting number 16 will now come to order. May we have the playing of the National Anthem? Now let us have bow our heads and take a moment of silence and reflection so that we will ask for the wisdom and the guidance as we serve our community this evening. Thank you. Madam Clark, would you please call the row?
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Reamy, President Harden.
Councilman Reamy, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to Section 111.30 of Columbus City Code, may I have a motion to temporarily suspend the rules of speaking before City Council outlined with Section 111.12 of the City Code during the period of time that we are conducting meetings electronically due to the COVID-19 stay-at-home order? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Pro Tim Brown. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Reamy, President Harden.
Can I get a, thank you. Per the advice of City Attorney's Office, a notice to this effect will be published on the City Council's website, in the City Bulletin, and on the speaker slip. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal?
Second.
Second by President Pro Tim. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Reamy, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Thank you. So we have with us this evening, again, this is our first meeting back since the COVID crisis has come to our community, and we are pleased to have joining us our mayor, Mayor Andy Ginther. Would you like to take a few moments to speak with us this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, President Harden, and thank you so much for the invitation to join you and to all the council members. Thank you for this chance to share some thoughts with you and to thank you for all of your ongoing support and leadership during this time. The several weeks, the last several weeks have been extraordinary time in our city, our state, and our nation as we battle a global pandemic. I am simply in awe of the Columbus spirit that we have seen, our healthcare systems banding together to take care of all of the people of Central Ohio, local companies and organizations stepping up with innovative solutions, Patel, Ohio State, Cardinal Health, Abbott Labs, and other companies shifting gears at a moment's notice to help prepare and make PPE for our first responders and healthcare workers. Middle West and Watershed went from spirits to sanitizer for our frontline employees and for those in our community. IC3D, Rogue, and Aunt Flo shifting to that critical PPE equipment that's so desperately needed by our hospitals and healthcare systems. And from foundations to grassroots organizations working to raise funds and deliver support. The Columbus Foundation, the United Way of Central Ohio, the groups like Women to Women, who donated 200 bags of food to the families at Mifflin Middle School that included non-perishables and a $25 Kroger gift card. Partnered with a local restaurant to serve hot meals on Tuesdays and Wednesdays to kids and seniors, they've given out 700 meals. This is an all volunteer-driven effort and one that we can be proud of in our community. The African-American Mail Wellness Walk delivered 1,200 care bags to the incredible medical staff at OSU East. The needs in our community are great and will continue to grow. We're addressing this crisis really in three phases. Obviously, first and foremost is the public health crisis. Dr. Mashika Roberts is working to lead that effort for us, focusing on preservation of life and protecting the health and safety of our residents. But there's also a human service crisis, the basic needs for residents that continue to grow, who have lost their jobs, have faced economic displacement, and the challenge with just the basic needs for themselves and their families, and economic recovery. One that's focused and rooted in equity, shared prosperity, and wanting to make sure that everyone, as we get to that place of recovery, is focused on growing together stronger. We're addressing each of them through an equity lens to make sure that the health disparities that existed in our community before COVID-19 and have dramatically shone a light on those disparities since the crisis has hit our community and communities around the country. We've been working hard to ease the burden on residents impacted by COVID-19. By suspending water and power shut-offs, we've restored power and water to hundreds of customers while this crisis has taken place. We've suspended the accumulation of penalties and waiving late fees on parking tickets. There's been a temporary suspension of collections on delinquent city income tax and EMS transportation fees, and working with City Attorney Klein and the Franklin County Municipal Courts to waive evictions and setouts for eight weeks. We've also provided funding for basic city services in partnership with this City Council. The leadership of the Health and Human Services Chair, Councilwoman Priscilla Tyson, dedicated a million dollars for the Community Shelter Board for our homeless neighbors that are facing major, major challenges, not just with the threat of COVID-19 in our shelters, but in their own lives as well. $400,000 for the Life Care Alliance, better known as Meals on Wheels, in our community to help seniors. $500,000 for the YMCA, $125,000 with Columbus Urban League in partnership to help our small emerging minority-owned businesses take advantage of those critical SBA loans that the federal government and the CARES Act has made available. We're starting to look at what a transition from the stay-at-home order would look like for Columbus. What I want to be absolutely clear about, and I've shared this with many of the members individually, is that our transition will be based on data and science, not dates. We're going to consider reopening, we must have five critical things that Dr. Roberts has shared with me that I've shared with the governor. First of all, we have to build our capacity for testing with our local healthcare providers. Our hospitals have the capacity, but current testing guidance is far too restrictive from the State Department of Health. We need more swabs and kits for testing. We need the state to require community members to wear masks outside of their home for the foreseeable future. We need clarity and guidance for mass gatherings throughout the state for at least the next three to six months. And we need to have clear guidance and support on managing, testing, containment, and mitigation of COVID-19 at long-term care facilities. These five things are absolutely necessary for us to move forward with a smooth, deliberate, and thoughtful transition, making sure that we're promoting safety and health above all else. Without a doubt, these are the most challenging times many of us have ever faced and hopefully ever will. Our road ahead is difficult, and we must work together to make sure all of our residents have equitable access to recovery. I've never been more proud of this city than I am today. Remember, to all of those that have joined us tonight and our neighbors throughout this great city, this situation is temporary, but the spirit of Columbus and the greatness of this community has always been found in its people. The people of this great community will help us rebuild, restore into a brighter and safer future together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues and on behalf of a grateful city. We appreciate your leadership and the work that you have done. It's been an honor to work side by side with you this council over the last six weeks as we've worked on things like the human services dollars, the emergency service dollars that we got to the Shelter Board, but also the service dollars that we will pass tonight. We also just want to thank the leadership of the Health Department, our own Dr. Mashika Roberts and her team, and all those on the front lines who have helped to keep us safe. We are very grateful. With that, actually, I'm going to jump to Dr. Roberts if she would like to give an update to City Council and to our community on where we stand right now with COVID-19. Dr. Roberts?
Sure. Thank you, Council President Harden, and thank you, Mayor Ginther. I'm happy to be here this evening and share with all of you what we've been doing over the last few weeks and tell you where we are as a community in terms of our cases of COVID-19. As of this afternoon, in Columbus Public Health jurisdiction, we have 1,119 cases of COVID-19. And unfortunately, we've had 18 deaths that I have to report today. Of our cases, 176 or 16% have required hospitalization. The vast majority of our patients at this point are male, about 51% are male, and 16% of our patients have required, as I said, hospitalization. 20% of our cases are healthcare workers, so these are individuals on the front lines who are caring for the very sick in our community. We have been following our race and ethnicity data here for our cases in Columbus because we wanted to see if there was a disparity. And unfortunately, we did see a disparity, just like so many other large cities have been seeing across our country. I can tell you that about 20% of our data is blank, meaning we don't have that information, but of the 80% that we do have the information, I can tell you that 29% of our cases are African-American, which is consistent with the number of African-Americans we have in our community. But unfortunately, African-Americans are disproportionately affected when we look at hospitalization, where 38% of those who are hospitalized are African-American, and 17% of those deaths are in the African-American community. As I've been saying for the last several weeks, the majority of our cases fall in the range, the age range of 20 to 29 years of age. And we know that we say our older adults who are over 60 or over 65 are increased risk for complications of COVID-19. Their numbers still remain low. I think it's because they're largely been compliant with the social distancing, and most of them, many of them, are retired, and so it's easier for them to practice that social distancing. As I've said before, the mayor and Council President Harden and I had a press conference today about our healthcare disparities. We understand why we're seeing healthcare disparities. This is not new. We know that African-Americans are disproportionately affected by many chronic diseases like hypertension, diabetes, asthma, lung, and heart disease. And we also know from looking at the data worldwide that individuals living with those chronic conditions are at increased risk of complications from COVID-19. And so we're not surprised that we see the disparity here, but it still is not right that we see the disparities. So we have launched here at Columbus Public Health a new center for public health innovation, which will specifically look to work to undo some of these disparities, come up with policies and recommendations for interventions for Mayor Ginther to explore for our community to help improve the quality of life of our individuals and increase the life expectancy for individuals, minority individuals, living in our community. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have any for me, Council President Harden. And again, I thank you for this opportunity.
Dr. Roberts, thank you for your leadership. Please pass along our deep appreciation, this council and the cities, for all those folks who've been on the front lines working. We certainly appreciate it, and we are healthier because of it. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the Health Commissioner? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to also throw it over to our City Attorney. The City Attorney's Office has been doing admirable work, courageous work with these last several weeks to keep people safe in our community. My City Attorney Klein.
Thank you, Council President Harden and members of council. It's great to see every one of you. At the top here, I just want to recognize the wonderful work that the council has done in preparing and educating the community about the effects of COVID-19 and the coronavirus, as well as your intentions and efforts to ensure important human services dollars are pushed out the door to help some of our most vulnerable residents. I'd also like to recognize the work that the administration has done, particularly Dr. Roberts and the Department of Health, whom myself and my office have been working with diligently since this crisis began to figure out how we can do our best to contain the virus, but at the same time, understanding the legal contours that both she and the mayor have in these unique times. Another shout-out and recognition to the Department of Technology, who I know have been working overtime to ensure many city departments, including the City Attorney's Office, was able to work safely and work remotely and make sure we were able to continue with the city's business. So Director Orth and his team, I know that have been working hard, and I want to publicly acknowledge all that as well. Also, recognition to the court system, you know, trying to shut down 110,000 per year docket to alleviate the concerns and address the slow spread of the coronavirus is a Herculean task. But kudos to Judge Barrows and all the judges over in the municipal court and working with us, the Sheriff's Office, the clerk, as well as other prosecutors from our suburban friends and surrounding and inside Franklin County to make sure that it is a safe place for all participants. You know, it's in that vein that I want to address a couple and update the council on a couple of different things. The first regarding the court. We've read a lot across the country about how jails, in particular county prosecutors' offices, sheriffs states around the country were scrambling to get ahead of decarceration, meaning how can we ensure that only the right people are in jail, knowing that a jail or a prison can be a hotspot and a quick spread for COVID-19. I'm pleased to announce that the work that this city has done for the past two years has really set us ahead of the curve. When you look at reforming the bail policy in the city of Columbus, where absent unique circumstances, we do not ask for cash bail for nonviolent misdemeanor crimes, or the work that the City Attorney's Office and this council has done on not prosecuting misdemeanor marijuana cases, coupled with other progressive diversion programs. There was a point about five to six days ago, and I haven't seen the most latest numbers, where approximately 179 people were in jail for a sentence or for an arrest for 179 people out of the approximate population of the jail of about 1,600. In a city of the size of Columbus, 900,000 people, to think that just 179 people are incarcerated, I think it's the work that we've done to make sure that only the people that deserve to be in jail are there. So as it relates to municipal court, who are those people? Those are domestic violence abusers. Those are folks who have committed sex crimes. And then those are individuals who have excessive or multiple OVIs. And also that number, I should note, this is a footnote, those numbers also include our suburban friends, which obviously the city Columbus has no control over. I don't know the exact percentage, but say a dozen or two dozen, three dozen of those are even beyond our control. So we've been working really hard to ensure that our jail population is reflective of only those who should be in jail. And that started way before COVID-19 ever came onto the scene. One alarming concern, though, is domestic violence. We have seen an uptick in domestic violence arrests and advising and working with the Columbus Division of Police and as well as the Franklin County Prosecutor's Office. Our Division of Police really are only arresting individuals who commit violent crimes and who commit high-level felony crimes. Others are being asked and given a summons to show up to court at a later date when the court opens up for a crime that's been alleged. That still doesn't mean that the uptick of domestic violence isn't present in our community. We've been averaging about 60 domestic violence arrests per week, which is alarming. In the month of March, we've had three domestic violence-related homicides. And if you look at that in one-month period compared to all of last year, we had seven. So three out of seven, three in one month and seven out of one year is certainly alarming. So we are keeping our pulse on that situation and using the opportunity to speak, to talk about the fact that while businesses may be shut down, we don't want victims of domestic violence to think that there is no hope or help. The Shelter's hotline through Lutheran Social Services, the Domestic Violence Choices hotline, is open and staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Anyone who feels that they need to call that number, they should. Of course, if you're in immediate danger, you can always text or call 911. But what has risen out of this more recently and what our office has announced today that I think is reflective not only of being able to act and pivot in times of crisis, but also a recognition of just how the millennial generation is dealing with domestic violence is we announced a text support number that you can call, or I'm sorry, that you can text to my office during working hours where one of our victim advocates will get back to you. Look, if you're within earshot of your abuser and we're doing stay-at-home orders, that's a tough situation to escape, and we have to be realistic that many folks may not be able to call. So we created a text option for folks to text, and they can get information from my office of how they can safety plan or get a whole bunch of choices or even file directions on how to file protection orders. So we've recognized in talking with our victim advocates as well that a lot of folks that are younger than I, they don't even like to talk on the phone, which is a recognition of why texting also is so important. It's just having that ability to be able to text. So we were, you know, as it relates to the Prosecutor's Office, our prosecutors are still on a rotating schedule. They're coming into the courthouse to deal with those misdemeanor crimes that are of violence, that are sex crimes, excessive OVIs, and working with the judges on that. One final note that I'd like to take an opportunity to talk about, Council President Harden, is the work that my office has done with Department of Health and the Division of Police as it relates to inspections of businesses in the city of Columbus. We are not necessarily inspecting for essential v. non-essential, but we are and have been inspecting as it relates to social distancing and following proper hygiene pursuant to the governor and Dr. Acton's orders. And I think what is remarkable, but probably not surprising, is the fact that out of the thousands and thousands and thousands of businesses in the city of Columbus, we have only issued warning letters to approximately 25 to 30, and there's only one of those businesses that have risen to my desk for consideration of prosecution. When you look at one out of the tens of thousands of businesses, I think that is overtly impressive, and I think is of the makeup and desire of the city of Columbus to do the right thing and an understanding that we are all in this together and it takes all of us to sacrifice. And obviously, some are sacrificing more than others, and we can't forget that because of the economic distress this virus has caused. But to have one business that has some allegations that may arise to a prosecution out of the tens of thousands of businesses, I think speak highly of the Columbus economy, and it speaks highly of the Columbus business owners who are out there doing the right thing, and I want to applaud them for all of their efforts. You know, at this time, I'll stop and be able to answer any questions that members of council may have.
Thank you, City Attorney. Are there any questions of the City Attorney by council members? Well, again, City Attorney, we've appreciated your legal guidance over the last six weeks. Our President Pro Tim, sorry.
Thank you. Very quickly, City Attorney, thank you for the quick innovation I had not heard about the texting program for reporting abuse and violence that couldn't be more important in this time, and I really appreciate how quickly that was done. I recently saw, and the governor, I believe, has talked about the 50% drop in child abuse cases because children are not seeing mandatory reporters. And I don't know how much you can really answer here. I know that that's Children's Services, but the kind of technology you're talking about may be a really important thing to be able to talk to other components of the abuse prevention infrastructure.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Brown and Council President Harden. We'd be happy to talk with any reporting agency of how we set ours up. I mean, it was simply, you know, using a Google Voice and creating a platform within our office to do it. So the technology isn't super complex, but the need is there. And I think you raised upon a good point where because we live in a time where there are no mandatory reporters, that not only for children, but for even victims of domestic violence, we all have to step up and be reporters. Sadly, many people live next to homes who may hear screams or may hear disturbances. I think it's incumbent upon us to take the extra steps to look out for our neighbors. We may see children playing who have bruises or who have injuries. We can make those reports ourselves. That doesn't mean that you're necessarily tattletaling on your neighbor, but we have to, I think, look out for each other and be more diligent, especially for the most vulnerable now than we ever have been. And certainly, it's a balance between wanting to respect the privacy of your neighbor versus wanting to, you know, report. But that balance, in my opinion, when we are in a lockdown fighting a global pandemic, errs on the side of looking out for the most vulnerable. And that certainly means the elderly and children. And you certainly can call Children's Services, call my office if you suspect abuse. That doesn't mean necessarily that there is abuse, but you can certainly get the right conversation and the right people involved to investigate because children can't make the calls for themselves, and we do have to be more vigilant in these times and look out for one another.
Thank you, President Pro Tim, and thank you again, City Attorney, for all your office. Your entire office has been awesome to work with over the last several weeks.
Thank you, President.
We also have our auditor, I think, that is with us. I don't know if Auditor Kilgore would like to say any remarks. I don't have too few. If not, we will continue on with our agenda. Tonight, we have one resolution. It's 077X-2020, and it's to recognize, honor, and thank frontline workers in Columbus. In the face of this disease, many Columbus residents leave the house each day for work to providing critical services to this community, particularly want to recognize and thank the workers with ASME, with SEIU, with United Food and Commercial Workers, the Communication Workers of America, the Paternal Order of Police, our Internal Association of Firefighters, our Transit Workers Union, our Ohio Nurses Association, the Internal Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and the many other union members who continue their essential duties to keep our city safe and healthy. As the economy begins to slowly transition, Columbus City Council will work to ensure that workers are not forced to City Council will work to ensure that workers are not forced to choose between their health and their paycheck. Both during and after this crisis, we must not all, we must all not only thank frontline workers, but honor and support them for the sacrifice they've made and for the benefit of all of us. Now be, now therefore, be resolved by the City Council, the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize and honor and thank our frontline workers here in Columbus. Do any of my council members have any comments on this resolution? Seeing none, may I ask for adoption? Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Remy. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Resolution is adopted. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second?
Second.
President Pro Tim, second. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance, numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinances 684, 687, 698, 709, 711, 712, 725, 794, 843, 873, and 874-2020. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 539, 649, 650, 664, 667, 671, 679, 697, 727, 756, 774, 785, 787, 797, 818, 819, 823, 826, 828, 838, 846, 848, 851, 859, 863, 919, 920-2020. Technology Committee, ordinance 928-2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 545, 805, 813-2020. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 899-2020.
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of expression, 73X, 74X-2020. Finance Committee, ordinance is 588, 589, 630, 714, 718, 747, 750, 753, 759, 786, 788, 796, 798, 806, 856, 866, 879, and 898-2020. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 610, 611, 618, 622, 623, 626, 638, 656, 663, 680, and 804-2020. Veterans and Senior Affairs Committee, ordinance 655 and 662-2020. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 536, 616, 642, 660, 661, 728, 729, 730, 731, 755, 861, 864-2020. Technology Committee, ordinance is 403, 651, 877, 880, 881, 897-2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee, resolution 71X-2020, ordinance is 3151-2019, ordinance is 597, 632, 653, 675, 685, 721, 735, 747, 60, 814, 815, 816, 824, 829, 832, 850, 894, 896, and 900-2020. Housing Committee, ordinance is 678, 821, 837, 840, 841, 872, 883, 884, 885, 886, 887, 917, 967-2020. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance is 585, 617, 672, 673-2020. Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 657, 669, 705, 726, 842, 871-2020. Environment Committee, ordinance 751-2020. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 568, 615, 643, 645, 913, and 988-2020. Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance is 817, 975, 979-2020. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0040, 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I now have a motion for approval of these items as designated as consent actions? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Pro Tim. Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of 655-2020 and 662-2020, on which I am abstaining.
Mr. Brown?
[inaudible]
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 672-2020, on which I am abstaining.
President Harden?
Yes, the items are passed with the noted exceptions. Before we move into the second reading, I just wanted to make the note that this is our first meeting back since mid-March, and we've done our best to leverage technology to ensure that all of our residents have the ability to engage with council. So folks can view this meeting right now from council's Facebook Live page, CTV's livestream. They can call in, they can be in person, although we are discouraging folks from coming down to City Hall. We apologize for the snags, as this is our first meeting back with the directors and the public engaging digital. But we are very grateful to CTV and to Technology Department for helping us with these capabilities. So starting tonight, so we'll be meeting every other Monday through June. We anticipate that those meetings will be virtual to abide by public health guidelines. So at that point, we will assess how to proceed to ensure transparency, accessibility, and of course, to protect our public health. So I just want to remind the public that we are still accessible by phone and by email, and council members love to hear from you seriously. And so we look forward to you in between our standard council meetings. With that, let's move forward with the agenda. I'm going to turn the floor over to our President Pro Tim and Chair of the Finance Committee, Councilmember Brown. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, President Harden. And we also appreciate, as council members, the work that you have put in to make these meetings go virtual, including the last time we did gather, we were part virtual to begin to respect the social distancing guidelines of our health department. So thank you for leading that charge. I believe we're one of the first bodies to do that. So I will start with the Finance Committee. Tonight in Finance, we have ordinance 0445-2020, to authorize the city treasurer to renew its contracts for various banking services with JP Morgan Chase Bank, Huntington Bank, and Fifth Third Bank, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,852,000 from various funds within the city, and to declare an emergency. In 2012, the treasurer's office issued a request for proposal for banking services. The Columbus Depository Commission, consisting of the city treasurer, auditor, and director of finance and management, received and reviewed proposals from six local banks and recommended, subject to the approval of the city council, the award of banking services to JP Morgan Chase, Huntington, and Fifth Third. The Columbus Depository Commission approved applications for the deposit of public funds with each of these banks. The contracts are for a period of 10 years, beginning in 2013, subject to annual appropriations and approval by this council. This ordinance represents the eight of 10 possible extensions of the original contracts for banking services bid in 2012. Emergency action is being considered tonight to keep the city's accounting system as up-to-date and accurate as possible. Unless there are any questions, seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And Councilmember Tyson has two ordinances in the Finance Committee. I would like to pass the floor to her.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Brown. I have ordinance number 631-2020. It is to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council Incorporated for the purpose of distributing the 2020 admissions tax proceeds to provide funding for grants to artists and arts organizations that serve as a foundation for the city's profile as a vibrant, inclusive city, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of the proceeds from the Creation, Innovation, and Inclusion Fund, anticipated to be up to $6 million, and to declare an emergency. These funds will be dispersed through the existing Greater Columbus Arts Council Grants Program, including the following areas: operation support, project support, individual artists and individual artist grants, and artist fellowships. Furthermore, these funds will provide support and resources through an international art exchange, residency programs, and workshops, as well as any new programs designed for arts nonprofits led by and primarily serving people of color. If there are no questions or comments regarding the, this particular ordinance, I move for passage by voice vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Remy. Did you second?
Mr. Brown.
Councilmember Brown, please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, word is passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 633-2020. It is to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council and the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority for the purpose of distributing 2020 admissions tax proceeds from the Facility Stabilization Fund, for the purpose of infrastructure, investment, and nationwide arena, as well as other arts, cultural arts, sports, and performance arts venues in the greater Columbus area, to authorize a combined appropriation and expenditure proceeds from the Facility Stabilization Fund, anticipated to be up to $3 million, and to declare an emergency. Columbus City Council authorized the establishment of the Facility Stabilization Fund pursuant to ordinance 3379-29, 2018. This fund was created in order to provide for resources necessary, necessary to maintain the integral, this integral facility, which is nationwide arena, as well as to invest in other cultural arts, sports, and performance arts venues in the greater Columbus area. Proceeds and proceeds were made possible through the enactment of a 5% tax on admissions to events. If there are no questions or comments regarding this particular ordinance, I would move for passage and ask for a voice vote.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
And now, Council President Pro Tim Brown will continue her finance legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Next, we have ordinance 0640-2020, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with 2K General Company for renovation of the Division of Fire Practical Skills Building, to authorize the transfer of $4,018,922 within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $3,050,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Practical Skills Building at 3639 Persons' Avenue is in need of upgrades to its plumbing and HVAC, as well as the exterior facade to eliminate water leaks in the building. Two bids were received for this project, with 2K General Company selected as the lowest-responsive bidder. Emergency action is being considered to complete the project as quickly as possible to limit the winter conditions the building needs to sustain in its current condition that could lead to additional damage from the water leaks. Are there any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row by voice. Call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Next, we have ordinance 0762-2020, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase Andritz D5LL centrifuges and services with Andritz Separation Incorporated, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from general budget reservation VRPO 001343, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of city code, and to declare an emergency. The Division of Sewers and Drainage is the primary user of these centrifuges, are, which are used at the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant, with an estimated annual cost of $150,000. The term of the contract expires March 31, 2022, with the option to renew for one additional year. The purchasing office advertised and solicited competitive bids, and one was received. Because the company submitted terms and conditions that require negotiations, a bid waiver is necessary to accept the negotiated terms and conditions. Emergency action is being considered because there is no current universal term contract for these parts that are needed at the wastewater treatment plant. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. And then I have one final piece of legislation in Recreation and Parks. May I move to that committee?
Please.
We have ordinance 0627-2020, to authorize the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department to enter into a grant agreement with the Children's Hunger Alliance in support of the organization's summer meals program, to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the Recreation and Parks General Fund, and to declare an emergency. Food security for children is a critical concern in Columbus neighborhoods. The issue is especially profound when children are unable to receive a free or reduced-price breakfast or lunch when school is not in session. Typically, this applies over the summer, but the COVID-19 health crisis has made access to food a challenge right now. I am so grateful to all of our community partners who are stepping up to help meet this challenge, including the Children's Hunger Alliance. This grant will allow the Children's Hunger Alliance, in partnership with our Rec and Parks Department and the Columbus City Schools, to pilot five open summer meal sites located in our city during the summer of 2020. Emergency action is being considered so that these dollars can be used to provide food during this critical time as quickly as possible. Before I move for passage, I want to just quickly shout out, well, first of all, Councilmember Favor, because I know she went to a CHA site last week and helped be part of that critical response team. And I just think often, in seeing the work that CHA is doing about this expanded definition of frontline responders, they are our public health workers. They are also people who are making sure that our kids are getting fed, including the food service workers at our school, including people who, who prepare and serve CHA's meals. They're having to do these things in different and new and unexpected environments, and they're doing it to make sure our kids can be fed so that they are able to continue learning in an extra-stressed environment. So with that, we are, I am moving for passage of this funding to support CHA.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee will come before council, is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I have ordinance 0758-2020-
Thank you, Council President. This evening I have ordinance zero-seven-five-eight-twenty-twenty to authorize the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Police to modify the current contract with Proto Inc. and increase funds for the continuation of towing management services to authorize an expenditure of two point five million dollars from the Division of Police General Fund Budget and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second?
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
That's all I had this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorrance. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number zero-six-one-nine dash twenty twenty. This ordinance authorizes the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations within this ordinance, the environmental remediation contractors for environmental remediation services on behalf of the Department of Neighborhoods from an existing term contract to authorize an expenditure of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from within the general fund and declare an emergency. Council President, with your permission, I'd like to request to table indefinitely this ordinance given the current COVID-nineteen pandemic. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to table ordinance number zero-six-one-nine indefinitely.
Second?
Please call the Row.
Ordinance is table indefinitely.
Thank you, Council President. May I move on to the Technology Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight I have ordinance number zero-six-six-five dash twenty twenty to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into contracts with Verity Corporation for an annual maintenance and related services associated with the Unrepeated Power Supply Systems, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into a contract with Verified Corporation for heating, cooling, and ventilation systems and various equipment maintenance, to waive the committed bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code in accordance with sole source provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize additional funding for the true-up for twenty nineteen dash twenty twenty service calls and for the extension and use of any remaining unspent slash existing balance on previously authorized purchase order so the astounding invoices can be paid, to authorize the expenditure of one hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-two cents, including contingency funds for the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Information Services Operation Operating Fund, and to declare emergency. Verified Corporation is the only authorized service provider for the Unrepeated Power Supply Equipment used by the city's data centers. Given the critical need for reliable Unrepeated Power Supply Systems for our data centers, now more than ever, it's in our best interest to contact directly with this vendor, hence the need to use the sole source procurement. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Is there a second? Right, uh, second by, uh, President Brown, uh, please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before the council is the Public Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number six-eight-one dash twenty twenty to amend the two thousand nineteen capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with Resource International for the Resurfacing Pavement and Asset Managed twenty nineteen project, to authorize the expenditure of up to one million five hundred thousand dollars from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows the chosen contractor, Resource International, to perform a pavement conditioning survey, assessment, and inventory service on the entire city network of approximately twenty-one hundred centerline miles. Data collected through the pavement condition survey will be used to develop preliminary budgets, maintenance strategies, and aid in the resurfacing, planning, coordination. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please, uh, second by, uh, Mr. Mitch Brown, and please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance number seven-one-five dash twenty twenty to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete intersection improvements Hilliard Rome Road at Federal Road Project to authorize the expenditure of forty-one thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars from the existing ACD one-zero-zero-zero-six-zero-one dash one-zero and ACDI zero-zero-zero-six-zero-two dash two-zero to pay for the acquisition of real estate and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service is completing the intersection improvements at Hilliard Rome Road and Federal Road. The city's acquisition of the real estate will help continue the work of this project, which will be open to the public. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance number seven-two-four dash twenty twenty to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter services con- materials testing and inspection twenty twenty project to authorize the expenditure of up to three hundred thousand dollars from the Private Construction Inspection Fund and up to seven hundred thousand from the Construction Inspection Fund to pay for the contracts and to declare an emergency. This ordinance provides the Department of Public Service with additional resources to continue contractual access to construction inspection services and material testing for city projects. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second?
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Up next we have ordinance number seven-three-four dash two-zero-two-zero to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of five single axle and five tandem axle live body dump trucks with snow equipment from FYDA Freight Miner Columbus to authorize the expenditure of up to two million five hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars from the municipal motor vehicle tax fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Infrastructure Management is responsible for maintaining Columbus roadways, including filling of potholes, street sweeping, mowing, alley, resurfacing, and snow and ice removal. This ordinance will fulfill the Division's need for five single axle and five tandem axle live body dump trucks with snow and ice equipment for the purpose of maintaining our roads. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second?
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Up next we have ordinance number eight-three-nine dash two-zero-two-zero to amend the twenty nineteen capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Columbus Asphalt Paving for the roadway Medina Avenue from Hudson to Briarwood Project to authorize the expenditure of up to one million one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and one cents within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. This contract consists of the reconstruction of point-two-zero miles of Medina Avenue from Hudson Street to Briarwood Avenue. The work also includes new curb and gutter, sidewalk streets, storm sewers, and street lighting. The project supports the new Linden Community Recreation Center that's currently under construction. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second?
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance number eight-seven-zero dash two-zero-two-zero to authorize the Auditor's Office to perform cancellation requested by the Department of Public Service to amend the twenty nineteen capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Double Z Construction Company for the Bridge Rehabilitation Go-Down Road Culvert Project to authorize the expenditure of up to one million ninety thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This contract will replace the existing stone culvert carrying go-down road over an unnamed stream and the adjacent timber pedestrian bridge located point-five now miles north of Bethel Road. The new construction, the new structure will be a four-sided precast concrete box culvert with enough width to accommodate a future sidewalk along the west side of the roadway. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second?
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And last in this committee, I have ordinance number eight-seven-six dash two-zero-two-zero to amend the twenty nineteen capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to modify a professional services contract with Walport for the arterial street rehabilitation Cassidy Avenue widening project to authorize the expenditure of up to one million two hundred forty-one thousand dollars from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to pay for this contract modification and to declare an emergency. This project will support various improvements to Cassidy Avenue from the Bexley Corporation Limit to East Seventh Avenue, including widening the roadway to three lanes and installing pedestrian and bikeway facilities, lighting curb and gutter, and closed drainage within the project limits. Improvements will also be made to the intersection of East Fifth Avenue and Cassidy Avenue. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second?
Thank you. Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. May I move on to the Housing Committee?
Please.
Uh, very quickly, I just wanted to take a quick moment to let everyone know that's watching that we are working hard to make sure residents are able to remain in their homes during this unprecedented time. I've been hosting regular calls with our housing partners across the city to receive updates and share information on a variety of topics from homelessness to the challenges faced by property managers, nonprofits, landlords, and tenants. I want to take this moment to publicly thank each of those organizations who have been working in overdrive to share resources and to help those in need as we navigate this uncharted territory. Our team here at council has developed two resource sheets, one for tenants and one for landlords that provides valuable information to assist during this time. I know that evictions are top of mind for everyone, and those resource sheets can provide you with more information about the Franklin County Municipal Court Stay on hearings until June first and other valuable information. Those resource sheets can be found on the council website, or you can reach out to my office and we will get them to you. If you feel that you have been informally evicted or that your eviction is a retaliatory action, please call six-one-four-six-four-five-five-six-five-oh. Thank you to Director Stevens and the Department of Development for helping set up this resource and continue to be committed to the city's housing work during these challenging times. I know this is difficult, but we can all get through this together. And so with that, we'll move on to ordinance number eight-six-nine dash two-zero-two-zero to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation of seven thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents from the OCO one to OCO five and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents from OCO three to OCO five, both in the two thousand nineteen Home Investment Partnerships Program Grant to authorize the appropriation of one million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents from the two thousand nineteen Home Investment Partnerships Program Grant to authorize the expenditure of one million two hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and twenty-four cents and the two thousand nineteen Home Investment Partnerships Program Grant to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of four hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-two cents from the two thousand eighteen Home Investment Partnerships Program to income, excuse me, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into agreements to provide funding for various approved housing programs that will assist first-time home buyers and for-profit and nonprofit organizations with grants or no or low-interest loans for projects designed to increase and preserve the local supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing for low and moderate-income families and to declare an emergency. I'd like to ask Director Michael Stevens if he has any additional comments on the use of these home funds. Director Stevens?
Thank you, Council President Harden, Council Chair Faber, members of council. These legislation is going to fund a couple of different projects. One is Creekside Place, which is going to be new construction for permanent supportive housing for those who are chronically homeless or disabled. It's going to fund sixty-three units and have the tenants will have a average income or average median income between thirty and fifty percent. It's also going to help fund two single-family homes in Linden that Habitat for Humanity of Mid-Ohio is doing. The buyers will be at an AMI of sixty percent or below. And then finally, it's going to create opportunities to provide fifty down payment assistance checks through our American Dream Down Payment Assistance Program, which offers up to five thousand dollars for first-time home buyers below eighty percent AMI towards the down payment on their first home.
Thank you, Director Stevens. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I will move for passage.
Second?
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And last, President Harden, may I move on to Criminal Justice and Judiciary?
Please.
Thank you. I have ordinance number five-three-five dash two-zero-two-zero to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit caption Dale Phillips versus Karen Blair et al., case number two-sixteen CV eight-eight-zero, pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio, Eastern Division, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of forty-five thousand dollars in settlement of the lawsuit and to declare an emergency. I'd like to ask Deputy City Attorney Laura Baker-Morris to provide us with the details of this settlement. Ms. Baker-Morris?
Thank you, Councilmember Faber, Council President Harden. In the matter of ordinance zero-five-three-five dash twenty twenty, I request on behalf of City Attorney Klein that council authorize the City Attorney's Office to settle the lawsuit caption Dale Phillips v. Karen Blair et al., United States District Court, case number C-two dash sixteen dash zero-eight-eight-zero for the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. The Department of Public Safety has approved this request. The sitting in this case was successful in a motion for summary judgment and advocating for the dismissal of all but one claim for damages. The various officers' actions in detaining Mr. Phillips, extracting him from his truck, using force to secure and handcuff him, and charging him with obstructing official business were all held to have been objectively reasonable. The only remaining claim for damages at the time of the offer for settlement was the harm Mr. Phillips allegedly experienced as a result of the use of pepper spray by Officer Groves. Mr. Phillips' eyes were treated at the scene by medics shortly after the use of the spray, and he declined to go to the hospital. The city does not believe that Mr. Phillips could have supported a claim for serious harm as a result of this pepper spray. Nonetheless, the financial risks to the city occasioned by a jury trial of such a claim where attorney's fees would be in play weighed in favor of a settlement of this one remaining claim. The funds to pay for the settlement will come from Department of Public Safety General Fund accounts, and the settlement will release the city and its employees from any and all claims arising out of this incident.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Second?
Please call her, Row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faber, Remi, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee, we're actually going to go to Councilmember Remi. I think that he has announcements for out of his committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have a couple of items this evening. Throughout the city of Columbus, especially Franklinton, we have seen an increase in reports of illegal dumping. This is a very serious offense, one that this body does not take lightly. I have been in contact and updated by the Department of Public Service on what is and has been done to address this concern. But I would like to turn the floor over to Director Gallagher so that she can provide this update to the community on this concern as well. Director Gallagher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Councilmember Remi, other members of council. The Division of Refuge Collection continues to focus on fighting illegal dumping in Columbus and concentrates on hotspots like Franklinton during the city of Columbus state of emergency. It is an essential service to our neighborhoods. Illegal dumping crews are working every day on alley cleanups while abiding by critical safety measures and social distancing to stop the spread of the coronavirus. So far in twenty twenty, five hundred eighty-eight tons of illegal- So far in 2020, five hundred and eighty-eight tons of illegal dumped trash and nearly three tons of tires, two hundred and sixty-five to be exact, have been cleaned up on the west side by Refuge Collection crews. This includes one hundred and nine tons of trash and debris and two tons of tires cleaned up just in Franklinton. All told, one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four tons of illegal dumped trash have been cleaned up citywide. Data helps Refuge Collection target hotspots and locate cameras to catch offenders. Cameras were used last year at seventy-one known illegal dumping sites. This aids the city's enforcement efforts. So far in 2020, eleven illegal dumping cases have been filed in Franklin County Municipal Court. Seven cases were on the west side and three of those were in Franklinton. Of the seven on the west side, uh, seven west side cases, three resulted in guilty pleas, three resulted in failure to appear, and bench warrants were issued, and one case was moved to June due to the COVID nineteen. In 2019, twelve illegal dumping cases were filed in the Franklin County Municipal Court, resulting in ten convictions. A bench warrant was issued for the offender in the two outstanding cases. Refuge Collection also billed forty-nine property owners citywide, a total of thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars for failing to comply with written orders to remove unacceptable waste from the right-of-way. We are continuing to ramp up all of these enforcement efforts citywide. In two years, the division's team of solid waste investigators has grown from one to five thanks to Mayor Ginther's commitment to fighting illegal dumping. The solid waste inspectors in our neighborhoods, every, are in our neighborhoods every day to identify illegal dumping sites and respond to service requests on possible dumping and refuse code violations. They investigated eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six requests in 2019. But we need residents to help be the city's eyes in your neighborhood. With the governor's stay-at-home order in place, more residents are at home during the day. If you see someone dumping items and trash in your alleys, please call three one one. When residents help the city zero in on hotspots of illegal dumping, you help us hold offenders accountable. Thank you, Councilmember Remy. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Director. We appreciate the update. Uh, I have one more, uh, just quick announcement. I just wanted to let everyone know I'll be hosting a virtual community hours on Thursday, the twenty-third from four to five. Um, calling number six five zero four seven nine thirty-two oh seven, access code seven three three nine eight three one six seven. You can also find additional details on my Facebook page by searching Emmanuel B. Remy. Thank you so much, Council President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. And before I begin the, um, the ordinances this evening in Health and Human Services, I certainly, I want to take this opportunity really to just focus on that April is Minority Health Month. And during this month, we would have had, held, um, a hearing on minority health, and we would also be providing resolutions to organizations that are focused in this area. So I would like to take a couple of minutes just to really talk about my, the importance of Minority Health Month, and certainly as it relates to what is going on right now with COVID nineteen. Um, Minority, National Minority Health Month was started, uh, more than a hundred years ago as National Negro Health Week. In fact, Dr. Booker T. Washington argued at that time that health was the key to progress and equity in all things, and that without health and long life, all else fails. He called on local health departments, schools, churches, businesses, and professional associations, and the most influential organizations in the African-American community to pull together and unite in one great national health movement. This is ironic because today we are doing almost the same thing. We are asking people to unite during this crisis, a crisis that we have not seen since the one faced in nineteen seventeen with the Spanish Flu. And today, our public health system is doing an amazing job with limited resources on the front lines of this battle. And I really applaud each and every one of you. Columbus Public Health and the Office of Minority Health is committed to developing policies and plans to support health efforts by informing, educating, and empowering communities which have been traditionally negatively impacted. Our Minority Health Month campaign of 2020 has been suspended due to the pandemic. This year, the traditional partnering with community organizations to present programming through the month of April have been replaced with new activities. I am proud of our community for the various health forums, wellness, social media posts, healthy eating, cooking, walking promotion videos are now being presented virtually. Chronic disease prevention, health equity, substance abuse, public service announcements, and conversations on mental health, nutrition, awareness are now being shown in an important new light. The African-American community and communities of color are being disproportionately impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic. And health equity is on display for the world to see. And that is why Minority Health Month was founded in nineteen fifteen. This is consistent with the work that I've done on, on the Health and Human Services Committee on Columbus City Council. I'd like to thank my colleagues for consistently supporting legislation I've sponsored to improve food access to healthy, local, affordable food, drug addiction, and mental health services, supporting harm reduction through Safe Point and Equitas, supporting Primary One and Columbus Public Health Services and Programs, Celebrate One, the Commission on Black Girls, and so much more. With your support, I plan to continue my advocacy. This year, Minority Health theme is for 2020 is active and healthy. So I like to encourage each and every resident to do that. Let's stay active and healthy. Let's eat healthy. Do things that will reduce cardiovascular disease, diabetes, substance use disorders. We need to raise awareness, promote healthier lifestyle choices, and more than ever, let's remain vigilant against COVID nineteen. Thank you. I know it was out of order, but if, if we didn't do it right now, April would be over. So thank you. And now I'd like to, you want to either take a break before we go to zoning, or what would you like to do, Council President?
Um, that's actually a good call, uh, Chair Tyson. Um, let's have council reconvene. Can I get a motion to, uh, uh, recess, uh, council?
Please call.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Council will reconvene at six thirty for zoning committee.
Thank you.
All here. Uh. Regular meeting number seventeen.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Uh, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee and all members serve on that committee. Before I throw it to Chair Tyson, we have two, uh, written testimonies, uh, that we will submit to the record, one being Benjamin Webb, who has, uh, presented a, uh, written testimony on ordinance zero eight six five and Mr. Steve Zabest, uh, via email on ordinance zero eight three four. With that, the floor is yours, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pretending to speaking with our council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, two proponents and three opponents, and we provide and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. And we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, anyone tonight who wishes to speak for or against any council variance, including staff, must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. We do so, we will do so prior to beginning the reading of each variance on the agenda. So the first ordinance is eight thirty dash twenty twenty. It is to rezone three seventy-seven and three eighty-seven Lechner Avenue being point twenty-two acres located on the west side of Lechner Avenue, a hundred and sixty feet north of Sullivan Avenue from R three residential district to AR two apartment residential district. The applicant is Amelia Richter. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Greater Hilltop Air Commission's recommendation is approval, twelve to two. And, um, so I first, if there are no questions or comments from anyone, I move to wave second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you. And now I move to table indefinitely.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. The next ordinance, if there is, if there, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. The ordinance is eight thirty-four dash twenty twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of sections thirty-three fifty-six point oh three, C four permitted uses, thirty-three oh nine point fourteen height districts, thirty-three twelve point four nine minimum numbers of parking spaces required, and thirty-three fifty-six point eleven, C four district setback lines of the Columbus City Codes for property located at seven thirty-one West Rich Street to permit the development of a multi-unit residential development, fitness facility, and leasing office with reduced development standards in the C four commercial district, and to repeal ordinance number nineteen seventy-two dash two thousand and nineteen, which was passed July the twenty-ninth of two thousand and nineteen. The applicant is the Ohio Community Development Finance Fund, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development fitness facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval at the Franklinton Area Commission's Franklin, Franklin Air Commission's recommendation is approval, twelve zero two. And this is one of the, um, this is one of the variances that Council President Harden mentioned that we do have, um, a, a letter from the Mr. Steve Zach Best and the clerk's office. And if there are no other questions or comments, I first move to wave second reading.
Second.
Thank you.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next is, is an ordinance to eight, eight thirty-five dash twenty twenty to rezone fifty Hosack Street being point nine six acres located on the north side of Hosack Street, three hundred and sixty feet east of South High Street from the R three residential district to the L C R, L C four limited commercial and R two F residential districts. The applicant is Mike Matthew Schertzinger, care of Donald Plank. The proposed use is automotive repair and residential use. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval, thirteen to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move to wave second reading.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. The ordinance is eight thirty-six dash twenty twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of sections thirty-three twelve point oh nine aisle, thirty-three twelve point seventeen parking setback line, and thirty-three fifty-six, um, eleven, C four district setback lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at eighty Hosack Street to permit reduced development standards for an automotive repair facility in the L C four limited commercial district. The map, the applicant is Matthew Schertzinger, care of Donald Plank. The proposed use is an automotive reset, automotive repair facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval, thirteen to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to wave second reading.
Second. Please call.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. The next ordinance is eight forty-seven dash twenty twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of sections thirty-three fifty-six point oh three, C four permitted uses, section thirty-three sixty-one point oh two, CPD permitted uses, and section thirty-three sixty-one point oh three E, development plan for the property located at seven, seven six nine zero New Market Center Way to allow an indoor self-storage facility with increased building height in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Hickory Capital Group LLC, care of Charlie Frost. The proposed use is a self-storage facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far Northwest Coalition's recommendation is approval, three to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move to wave second reading.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you. And now I'm, now I'm move, I'm sorry, um, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is eight fifty-four dash, uh, twenty twenty to rezone fifty-seven thirty Hayden Run Road being three point three six acres located in the north side of Hayden Run Road, eight, five hundred and eighty feet east of Avery Road from the R rule district to the LM two limited manufacturing district. The applicant is White Acres LLC, care of attorney Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is a contractor's office and a storage yard. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The height, Hayden Run Civic Association's recommendation is approval, four to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to amend to emergency.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Immediate.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to, I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. This ordinance eight fifty-five dash twenty twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of sections thirty-three twelve point two one landscaping and screening, thirty-three twelve point two seven two parking setback line, thirty-three twelve point three nine stripping and marking, thirty-three twelve point four one access and circulation, thirty-three twelve point four three required surface for parking, thirty-three twelve point four five wheel stop device, thirty-three sixty-seven point fifteen ACDE, M two manufacturing district special provisions, and thirty-three sixty-seven point two nine storage of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at fifty-seven thirty Hayden Run Road to permit reduced development standards for contractor's office and storage yard in the in the L M two limited manufacturing district, and to repeal ordinance number twenty-seven thirty-four dash twenty fifteen, passed December the eighth of twenty fifteen. The applicant is White Acres LLC, care of attorney Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is a contractor's office and a storage yard. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Hayden Run Civic Association's recommendation is approval four to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I wish to amend, amend to emergency.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. Ordinance eight sixty dash twenty twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three five R three residential district, thirty-three twelve point four nine C minimum numbers of parking spaces required, thirty-three thirty-two point oh five area district lot with requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point thirteen R three area district requirements, thirty-three thirty-two point nineteen fronting, thirty-three thirty-two point two six minimum side yard permitted, thirty-three thirty-two point two seven rear yard and thirty-three thirty-two point oh three seven A and D home occupation of Columbus City Codes for the property located at eight eighty Franklin Avenue to permit two single unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R three residential district. The applicant is Kathy A. Con, Con Oliver, Cons Oliver, care of Fred Hutchins, Hutchinson. The proposed use is two single unit dwellings on one lot. The C Department's recommendation is approval. Um, the Near East Side Area Commission's recommendation is approval, which is nine to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move to wave second reading.
Second.
And now.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
All right. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. Ordinance eight sixty-five dash twenty twenty to grant a variance from the provisions of sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh three five R three residential district, thirty-three twelve point four nine C minimum numbers of parking spaces required, thirty-three thirty-two point nineteen fronting, thirty-three thirty-two point two six minimum side yard permitted, thirty-three thirty-two point two seven rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for property located at eighteen oh five Franklin Avenue, and to permit two single unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R three residential district. The applicant is Jason Hervarnik. The proposed use is two, two single unit dwellings on one lot. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval eight to one. And this is, again, as Council President mentioned, this is a support letter um, for this particular variance is in, um, the count, is in the clerk's office. I now move to wave second, the questions from my colleagues first. I now move to wave second reading.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
And now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in zoning this evening is thirty-one oh three two thousand nineteen to rezone thirty fifty-one South High Street being twenty-seven point five six acres located on the west side of South High Street, one hundred and twenty feet south of South Gate Drive from the R two residential district to the L A R twelve limited apartment residential district. The applicant is Herman and Kittle Properties Incorporated, and the attorney is Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far South Air Commission's recommendation is approval five to four. And I do want my council members to know that, um, there is a good neighbor agreement that, um, this community and the developer have worked out together. And so with that vote, I would now, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to wave second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you. I, um, move to amend, ask submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And finally, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Counsel, as, uh, zoning is adjourned, we will reconvene, uh, in one minute, uh, uh, regular meeting number sixteen. Reconvene, regular meeting number sixteen. There a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. We will now go to the Health and Human Services Committee, which Councilmember Tyson chairs. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, President Harden. Uh, I know that earlier in the, in the meeting, you certainly have, um, you shared and thanked, I think, the, a lot of the first responders, and I too want to thank the first responders and all the essential personnel that have been working through, um, with, with throughout COVID nineteen. But I also have to thank another group of people, and I'm happy that we are having legislation on to support them this evening. But I also want to support those, the human service agencies who have certainly been doing a yeoman's job. When I think about, um, all the individuals that right now that have been furloughed, that have not in the past utilized many of the social service agencies that they are utilizing them now. And I'm so thankful that we have these agencies in our community to be able to support um, our residents at this time. And, uh, so I want to really thank the human service agencies because, um, the, the capacity in which they have had to operate in. Um, they deserve, again, a yeoman's thank you to trying to, because they want to meet everyone's needs to the best of their ability. And so, again, I'm happy to be able to have this legislation on tonight to continue to, um, support the work of many of our, um, social service agencies and just to say thank you to them. So the very first ordinance tonight is ordinance, uh, five seventy-one dash twenty twenty, and it's to authorize the Director of Development to renew grant agreement with numerous social service agencies to address and provide for multiple human service needs, to authorize expenditure of up to two million two hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents from the Emergency Human Services Fund, and to authorize expenditure up to two million two hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. In two thousand and eighteen, there was a request for proposals uh, were issued via direct mail to agencies and to partners to send their net, to, to send their networks of agencies press release, um, and on the city's website. The city received a hundred, four, a hundred and forty-two proposals representing a hundred and one agencies with over nineteen million dollars of requests. Of those, forty-four programs were selected for funding in two thousand and nineteen and were authorized under ordinance eleven seventy two thousand and nineteen. The awards were given with an anticipated renewal in, um, fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, pending availability of funds and program performance per agreements with each agency. All forty-four programs have performed in accordance with the agreement and are approved for second year funding. Um, each of those organizations did submit to my office how they had met the, uh, goals of their organization for the previous year. Normally, we would have held a hearing with each of those agencies coming in and sharing their work and also providing, you know, providing information as to how our residents could utilize that, their programs. Uh, and again, um, it, so we would do that every year. This year, we couldn't do it, so we were able to do it through, um, them providing us with this information. These programs initiatives will provide services to residents of Columbus within one or more of the following city's five investment strategies. Income through employment, job quality, education and training, fiscal capability and stabilization and resource support. I will say that the majority of the nonprofits were in the category of stabilization and resource support, and that's what is certainly needed right now, and e- even more so because of this pandemic. And so with that, if any, if, um, you want to find out more about those forty-four programs that were selected, please feel free to contact my office at six one four six four five two nine three two to get that information so you can utilize those services. If there are no other questions or comments regarding this legislation, I would like to ask my colleagues to support this legislation that is desperately needed for our community. I move for passage.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for your leadership, uh, on this and the hard work of your office, uh, and, um, the partnership with the mayor's office in LRO. So, uh, I just want to appreciate everybody's work, and to your point, it's needed now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much, and to, I thank everyone who's worked hard on making sure this happened today.
Yeah.
The next ordinance. I'm sorry. Oh.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is five ninety dash twenty twenty is to authorize the Board of Health to accept a reproductive health and wellness program grant from the Ohio Department of Health to authorize the appropriation of one million two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in grant money and fee revenues from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The Reproductive Health and Wellness Program will allow for women's health services, including family planning. Eligible patients will include women from Columbus Public Health's Women's Health Services Program at postpartum and women who have had a negative pregnancy test through our walk, walk-in pregnancy testing service. If there are no questions or com, or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is seven hundred dash twenty twenty is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the U S Department of Health and Human Services for the Healthy Start Grant Program in the amount of one million one hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred nine nine dollars to authorize the appropriation of one million one hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred nine nine dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. Uh, this program is an evidence-based home visiting program in Franklin County, primarily focusing on African-American women residing with the city of Columbus zip codes. And this is very important because, like, this is one to help with maternal mortality as well as making sure that our babies are born healthy and, um, live not, live not only to their first birthday but beyond. So the Healthy Start Program is to serve seven hundred clients, of which three hundred are pregnant women, three hundred are infants and children up to the age of eighteen months, preconception women, inter, preconception women, interconception women combined, and a hundred fathers or male partners affiliated with the Healthy Start Women and Infant, um, if, women, infants and children. Clients receive education on pregnancy, women's health, infant health, infant growth, development, safety, nutrition, immunizations, breastfeeding and safe sleep. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance nine seven, nine seventy-four dash twenty twenty is to authorize the appropriation and expenditure in an amount of two million one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars of the Emergency Solutions Grant from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a contract with the Community Shelter Board, the administration of the grant in the amount of two million one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. U S Department of Housing and Urban Development allocated the Emergency Solutions Grant Program funds of, of the city of Columbus in the amount of two million one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars is authorized by the Coronavirus Aid Relief and the Economic Security Act, which we know as the CARES Act. Public Law one sixteen through one thirty-six, the special E S G C V funds are to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, um, respond to the coronavirus epidemic among individuals and families who are homeless or receiving homeless assistance and to support additional homeless assistance and homelessness prevention activities to mitigate the co, the impacts of COVID nineteen. The Community Shelter Board will, will establish new and temporary emergency shelters for two purposes. The deconcentration of the existing emergency shelters to increase social distancing required to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen and the isolation and quarantine of households experiencing homelessness who are showing symptoms of COVID nineteen or have positive tests for COVID nineteen. And, um, so use of these funds is for temporary shelters will include E S G eligible operations, essential services, uh, costs, including staffing, some transportation, space, environmental services, laundry, food and supplies. This is so needed right now for our community. And so if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I would like to move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Um, I now would like to, um, see, now we have ordinance eight ninety-one dash, uh, eight twenty twenty is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Voice Core to authorize an expenditure from the Emergency Human Services Fund and to declare an emergency. Um, this ordinance is, uh, a twelve for twelve-month period. Funding will support reading for the blind, visually impaired and other print disabled Columbus residents. And again, it is so important to pass this legislation this evening based upon what is going on right now. It's, it's important all the time, but when you think about COVID nineteen, you want people to have this information to how they can get re, resources. There are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Uh, and all these ordinance, I certainly want to thank my council colleagues for this report. The next ordinance is ordinance eight ninety-two dash twenty twenty. It is to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Human Services Chamber of Franklin County to provide support for their sustainability and expansion efforts to authorize an expenditure from the Emergency Human Service Fund and to declare an emergency. We want to provide support for the sustainability and expansion efforts aimed at improving the quality, quantity and value of its mission to support and champion nonprofit members and the community at large. And, um, the Human Service Chamber has also been advocating for human service organizations and the clients in which they serve. And certainly during this critical time in our community, I do want to thank Michael Corey and all the agencies that are part of the Human Serv, Human Service Chamber for, again, um, one, he's constantly advocating for the work of the, of the, um, of the organizations, and also he is certainly providing us with needed information as to what these agencies are seeing and, um, and what we can do to continue to be supportive. So if there are no questions or comments, um, regarding this legislation, I would move for passage.
Second. Second.
Brown Brown Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and the final ordinance and my, for me this evening, is ordinance number um eight ninety-five dash twenty twenty is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Ethiopian Taiwahito Social Services in support of their uh ongoing adult programming work and work just within our community with individuals that are certainly um individuals who are new Americans to our community, and to provide them with the skills and train they need to continue to move forward um with their lives. And so if there are no questions or comments, I would move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown Brown Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you very much for the support of uh Health and Human Services this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um we have one more piece of legislation that's going to be read by Chris McRea.
Thank you, Chris. President Harden, um our final piece of legislation, Health and Human Services Committee, is ordinance number nine sixty twenty twenty to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with ALVS one eighty in support of the HIRE program to authorize an expenditure within the Emergency Human Services Subfund and to declare an emergency. The legislation authorizes the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with ALVS one eighty to support the HIRE Help and Reentry Employment Education Program for a twelve-month period for a total of one hundred thousand dollars. HIRE is designed to address barriers created by individuals' criminal justice involvement. The higher education class covers a range of topics, including interview skills, resume writing, and job retention, and serves as a support group for participants. Each client has a case manager who helps review career options and develops a plan to serve as the client's roadmap to success. Emergency action is necessary to avoid causing interruptions in the delivery of program services. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice.
Okay.
Please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes?
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
I'm staying.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance passed. Seeing no part of this under fourth council, I will uh say that we got a brief testimony for non-agenda from this camp under that will uh be reflected. Um everyone stay safe, and we will see everyone uh in two weeks. Uh so uh thank you so much. May I have a motion?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown Brown Dorans favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right.